Your life.
Thank you, and welcome to our February 3 Committee of the Hall meeting. And to start our meeting, I would like to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, if we could have a legislator's roll call.
Mr. Barnes. Mr. Barnes.
Now that I am muted myself, I'm here, present.
Mrs. Burdick?
Here.
Mr. Crandall?
Here.
Mr. Curran? Mr. Decker?
Here.
Mr. Dibble?
Yes.
Mr. Fanton?
Here.
Mr. Graves?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Havy?
Here.
Mr. Healy?
Here.
Mrs. Hopkins? Mr. Ricky?
Here.
Mrs. Root?
Here.
Mr. Stacken?
Here.
And Mr. Curran, are you on? Thirteen present, two absent.
Thank you. First portion of our meeting is the Public Works Committee, and this is chaired by legislator Dwight Fanton. So legislator Fanton, if I get off the track here, holler, please, help me out.
We'll do.
Under Highway, the first order of business is acceptance and appropriation of Marshalle funding for Main Street Bridge. This is in the Village of Andover Bridge in 2215290. We could have.
Fanton will move that.
Ricky will second.
Motion is made by legislator Fanton, seconded by legislator Ricky. Discussion. All in favor of this say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried, and that will generate a resolution for our full board. Next order of business is approval of supplemental agreement with New York DOT for County Route 20 over Teenerie Creek in the Village of Cuba, been 3090290. Motion.
Fanton will move.
Ricky seconds.
Motion made by legislator Fanton, seconded by legislator Ricky. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried, and that will also generate a resolution for our full board meeting to be prefiled. Next order of business is approval of supplemental agreement number two with New York State DOT for County Route 20 over Teenerie Creek in the Village of Cuba. And why am I looking at the exact same wording on this as the one before? For these next, are these different orders of business here?
From the experience last time, we did one resolution for the funding, which will go to Ways and Means, which is the one you're on, and then the other one is used to go to the board to get the resolution needed to sign the supplemental agreement.
So we'll take action on each of these. And this, number three, I believe we need a motion for that one.
Fanton will make that motion.
Ricky seconds.
Motion made by legislator Fanton, seconded by legislator Ricky. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried, and we will have a resolution for that. Number four, 2021 budget adjustment to appropriate additional federal aid for that same bridge that we just took action.
Yeah, so I'll move that. Fanton will move that.
Ricky will second.
Motion made by legislator Fanton, and seconded by legislator Ricky. Discussion.
I think this is the one that just goes to Ways and Means. Is that right, Justin?
Correct.
Thank you.
And also, there should be a note, the first resolution that was passed for Main Street Bridge and Village of Andover, that just needs to go to Ways and Means. A separate resolution is not needed to sign the supplemental agreement.
Further discussion?
Chairman is Dibble?
Yes, Mr. Dibble.
Yeah, question for Carl Graves. Did this used to have gas lights on this bridge in Andover?
It did at one time. They haven't been operational since the 30s.
Okay, thank you.
That was the bridge under number one. We're on on item four. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed?
Unless I misunderstood the comments on that, I think that both actions are going to require a resolution. Did I misunderstand? Have somebody say that they did not?
I thought that they did, but Justin questioned whether they needed a resolution.
Yeah, that was me. I highlighted the form when I sent it down. I'll stop down and show you what I'm talking about after.
Okay, thank you.
Any of these that need a resolution, we'll be sure that they that they get them. If it's unnecessary, it's unnecessary. Number five, permission to award concrete box culvert bids. Motion.
Fanton will move that.
Ricky will second.
Motion is made by legislator Fanton, seconded by legislator Ricky. This is to award the concrete box culvert bids. Discussion. Justin, any information we need to know about this?
I was just trying to Google where Lakeland's at, because I get that question every year, and I always forget to look right beforehand. But other than that, nothing.
Legislator Barnes, I have a quick question. The engineer's estimates on a couple of those bids were considerably higher than 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 the bids. I was just wondering what the reason for that.
There's multiple reasons for that, but one of the main reasons is when the engineer estimate is being calculated, it's well, really early in the process and doesn't account for any commodity changes. And that's probably the biggest thing with the rebar steel and the concrete itself.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Ready for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And that motion is carrying. Number six is approval of intermunicipal mutual aid agreement sponsored by the Allegheny County Town Highway Superintendent's Association.
I'll move that. Fanton will move that.
Ricky will second.
Motion made by legislator Fanton, and seconded by legislator Ricky. Discussion. Is this repetitious of what we've done in the past?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Any further discussion?
Just, it's great that we're able to work out this agreement. It makes it really beneficial for the towns as well as the county. So appreciate that coming together. Thank you.
Any further comments or discussion? We're ready for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Bridge, New York, 2021 update.
Yes, I just wanted to take a minute to inform the committee that New York State did start a new, another Bridge New York program. The previous one is the one that we currently have funded, the County Route 20 Bridge Project out of Cuba. We did initiate through request for proposals with consultants and are hoping to get this mission in here shortly, and if everything goes well, we should be able, might be able to get another award for a federal state paid for bridge.
Thanks, Justin. Is this in the governor's proposal, but not yet in the passed in the budget? Is that where that stands?
They're taking some middles as part of the actual budget. I guess I couldn't speak for that.
I believe that's the case, Kurt.
I would think that stranger things have happened. Could be an executive order.
We could only hope.
So we don't need any action on that. That's just informational at this time. Under solid waste, and everybody has a copy of this, there's a request from Jared Kramer Forest Management Services, Inc. And it's for temporary use of landfill road access. And I think before we dive into into this, we probably ought to have a little bit of discussion on it. There's no exchange of of any money here. And my concern is if we were to move forward with this, we have a lot of property, and we have a lot of neighbors and liability and other things come into hand here. I'm for helping out and doing what we can, but I have a feeling that this could open up a can of worms in other areas. I'm certainly, if I'm wrong or not looking at this correctly, or I'm misunderstanding something, someone can help me out here, but that's a concern that I have, and I think it ought to be some of those questions answered before we just say, don't worry about it.
I had a question as to what our past practice has been.
I cannot answer that.
Can't answer that either. I don't know.
Perhaps. I personally don't know of any time the landfill or any road that we have for our own facilities was used for logging. Could we get that research? And I wouldn't think it would just be the landfill, but any of our county property or past practice has been? Yeah, I can definitely look into it. I have not come across anything.
Can you give us, Justin, in a nutshell, beyond what this this letter is, is there anything more we'd need to know about this that to understand what they're looking for?
No, I believe you raised some valid concerns. I brought this to the committee only because in the conversations I've had with him, he addressed my concerns for the safety of the public and the condition of the road after it's used. So as in a department level, I'm okay with what was proposed, but there definitely is more to this that the committee definitely needs to discuss.
I guess I don't understand the objection that you brought up, Kurt.
They're an adjacent neighboring property. And to get logs out, they would need to come across our property using the landfill road and coming out that way. My concern is that we have a lot of properties in the county, and without any kind of consideration, I think that we open up, like I said, could open up a can of worms of ones that if we do this for at this time, what's to prevent us from doing it in the future? And I I question liability. I question other things besides if we break it, we'll fix it. Not that I don't want to be a good neighbor, but we have a lot of other things in play here.
Yeah, this is Fanton. I think if you look back a few years ago, we had a, and I don't remember how it ended up, the same type of situation because the where they where they had access to cross, it was really swampy, and so they came to us and and asked us for an alternative route, and I'm, and I don't remember for sure how that ended up, but it should be back in the minutes someplace.
Would Scott Torrey know about that? I'm kind of with you on that. I think there was something with the sort of conservation, wasn't there?
Yeah, I remember. We looked at it. I just don't remember how it ended up, but I thought we worked out something that benefited them and us both, but I don't remember exactly the details.
Get in the right track.
Well, if this committee or board took action, it's going to be, we'll be able to access and know what we did at that time. It'll be in the minutes.
Your chairman is Dibble?
Justin.
Dibble?
Yes.
I don't know if anybody else heard you, but you were all talking up there. Can you repeat that? I think we lost Mr. Dibble for a minute. Mr. Barnes, did you hear something?
I'm here.
Yeah. Hold on just a minute, Bill. Mr. Barnes?
Yes. Reading the two letters that we have here, it seemed to me that they were, that the county is pretty well protected, at least in my understanding, that protected against damage to the road, et cetera. If I'm wrong, I'd like to have Justin bring me up to speed on that, but I think that I tend to support it as long as the county is protected. Some, I can, I think that there's probably times when the county has to go on private property to to do jobs, and I think that it should work both ways.
Thank you. Mr. Dibble, you're back.
Yeah, I was just wondering if this should be attorney-client session on this subject.
Well, I don't think that we're there yet. If it was up to me, I think that I would ask and have some of these questions answered by the attorney and maybe county administrator. Look at that as well. If I'm nervous Nellie and the board wants to forge ahead, fine, but I just think some of those ought to be questions ought to be answered before we just enter into something.
Yeah, this is Fanton, and I would, I would move that we table that that part of, I mean, we haven't done it yet, but I think we ought to do some research on it, whether if you need a motion, go ahead and then table, whatever, but or just put a pause on it till do some research on past experience, because I know we've had it in the past.
I think that this, you know, if it's tabled, we can deal with it under old business.
Okay.
I was seconding that legislator Decker.
I don't want to shut somebody off. Yes, legislator Decker.
This is, that's a second to Dwight's motion to table.
All right. Let's, let's vote to table. That's really, we never had a motion on the floor. I think we're all on this. We all understand the intent, and this will put this on hold, and we can list it under old business, and in the meantime, have some questions to our liability and the legal part of it looked at in between. If everybody's good with that, let's, let's.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
From the, if I recall from the letter, he was going to go out to bid for this, for this timber and so forth, and wanted this root part of the agreement. Is, Justin, do you know whether this is going to be a bugaboo? Him getting this bid out there in time?
I can't say exactly what his timeline is, but I would imagine he would be intending to put this out to bid in the next month. Legislator Healy here again. Not only am I concerned about the past practice, where past practice has been, but also now the landowner here, he has other access, right? It just looks like this would be the shorter route. He owns Road Frontage on, what is it, Leonard Road in the town of Vamity. Is that correct? Correct. They had two pads in their plan, the one they're asking permission for and another one on the other side of the hill. I believe it used Peacock Hill Road. Right. Well, I think it's off.
I believe he also has a right of way over our property in a different location. It's just not paved.
Okay. That's an existing right of way.
Yes.
We've got, I think that I'm not I'm not sure there's a majority that wants to just forge ahead and take care of this without getting some answers taken care of. Everybody in favor of holding off on this, and we can deal with it under old business once we get some answers, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we'll, we'll get some of these questions answered. If there are some questions that we, that you have that didn't come up, get them to myself or Carissa or Brenda, and we'll make sure that we follow up on them. Number nine is local solid waste management plan update, if we could.
Mr. Chairman, this is Dean, if you can hear me.
Yeah, you got you, Dean.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. I believe you received a communication from Luanne Meyer from Barton and Le Judas confirming, obviously, that the public comment period has concluded. We received comments from two residents, and I'd like to acknowledge that they're very well thought out and the recommendations that they put forth, I believe, warrant consideration. So as Luanne mentioned in her communication, that the next step would be for the county to decide or determine which recommendations should be included in with the draft of the solid waste management plan that makes sense for what Allegheny wants to do going forward. And then, once they are incorporated with Barton and Le Judas assistance, once they're included in the draft, it would be forwarded on to the state for final review. So the next step would be for us to sit down with Barton and Le Judas, and whether it's the Public Works Committee, Committee of the Hall, or Subcommittee, but for all of us to sit down and review the comments and decide which should or may be included and which may not.
Thank you. And any questions for Dean on the on that plan update? It was our deputy superintendent under solid waste, Dean Scholes. You weren't going to just get away with this, Dean.
I was hoping to. I have, if Mr. Chairman, if it's all right, I have one more little piece of information unrelated to this solid waste management plan.
Yeah.
Working with Jennifer McMahon, our fiscal manager, we're working on year-end reports. And between 2012 and 2018, at the landfill, we collected, on average, about 3.1 million gallons of leachate annually. The final cap was installed at the landfill in 2018. So we averaged 3.1 million gallons of leachate collected during those years, and in 2020, it was just a hair over 995,000 gallons. So we've seen a significant drop leachate collected, which also translates into cheaper disposal costs. So just wanted to share that with the committee.
Yeah. I, for one, would not have thought that it would have dropped to that degree.
It's quite significant.
Yeah.
So I just, I just thought that was a point of interest to share with the committee.
Thank you, Dean.
You're welcome. That's all for solid waste.
Thanks. And now into Building and Grounds, Mag 1 update.
I'll continue that, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to share real quick, if folks haven't been in this building lately, Steve Brown and Sean Gruesendorf spearheaded getting COVID shields set up at Mag 2 in this building, which I think makes it more, much safer for our employees and our public. So I wanted to recognize Steve Brown and Sean Gruesendorf for their efforts to bring that together.
Thanks for bringing that forward. Any questions for Mr. Scholes on that? And if not, Chairman of the Public Works Committee, Mr. Fanton?
Yeah. Yeah, I would, I would just like to, I've asked Justin to next, at next month's meeting, to give us an update on our bridge projects, the ones that are state and federal funded primarily, and some of the other ones, and to let you know that it's really appreciated, past administrations and DP Dubby, as well as the one now, have been very good about submitting for these bridges, and it's worked out very well for us. We've gotten a really good share of those monies that were available in this project. So appreciate everything everybody's done.
Thank you. And I think we're, I always ball up the figures, but I think we're maybe the third we're in spot number three, maybe, of the county in New York State with the most bridges.
I believe you're pretty close there, Kurt.
Yeah.
And we also are right up there in actual condition of bridges. The last report that I saw, we were we were up in the top two, I think, unless that's changed since, since a year or so ago when I saw that, so.
That's where we were the last one I saw, and that's very good for the number we have, but as you point out, chasing the funds available to help maintain those is extremely important.
Yeah, we've been getting our share.
Don't talk too loud.
If nothing else, under Public Works, we will move on to Public Safety Committee, and this is legislator Healy's committee, he chairs. We do have some monthly reports and some action to take here, so, Mr. Healy, if I get again snarled up too bad, help me out quickly before I get too deep in.
Well, I always depend on Brenda myself, so.
Well, we all do that. I'm looking for anybody to help me out.
We'll try.
Can I move? Public Defender Barb Kelly has submitted a, her monthly report, and I don't know if Barb, are you with us? And if not, we do have that that report that has been submitted, and if there are any specific questions, you can get ahold of our public defender and those answered. Emergency Management and Fire, we have a monthly report from Director Jeff Lucky, and are you with us, Jeff? I see you, but I don't hear you.
Yes, I'm here.
Any, anything that needs highlighted on this report?
Um no, not not too much. I mean, again, we've been working with the uh DOH uh doing the testing and vaccinating. Uh we do have an EMT class started with twenty-three students in it. Um so that's going well. Twenty-four was our maximum we could have. Um so that's going very well. And we did um at our last fire advisory board meeting, uh we did uh ask the question and uh. Brooke was there and Mike was there and we asked the question kinda to the general public. Uh in attendance, how the uh radio system was going and they thought the the improvement of the towers had greatly enhanced. Uh their capability of receiving and talking back to dispatch. So um other than that, there's any questions of me, other than that, I'm done with my report.
That was uh legislator Healy and legislator Harris that were at the meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
The same legislators that should be contacted if there are any issues, correct?
Go for it.
Um any particular questions for uh Mr. Lucky on his monthly report? And if if not, uh there's a request to just revenue account. Uh in amount for the uh twenty twenty emergency management performance grain. If we could get a motion to get that on the floor.
And we'll move it.
Motion made by legislator Fanton. I I didn't catch the second, I apologize.
Well, you might as well put me down for the second there, legislator Healy.
Legislator Healy and uh discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Um Mr. Lucky, anything else?
No, that's it.
Under uh District Attorney uh Keith Slep, um I don't know if Mr. Slep is with us. But we do have his monthly report. And uh. Any any questions there? It can be directed to our uh District Attorney. And uh it looks like uh legislator Root has extra help today. That's good. Um stop DWI Director Brian Perkins. Uh that monthly report is attached. Mr. Perkins, anything to highlight or point out?
I I will point out my error at the very bottom of it. It was not December thirtieth when I submitted that. It was indeed last week in January, but so my apologies for that. Other than that, um everything else above pretty much stands for itself. Uh the VIPs have slowed down. We are gonna move to just once a month. That we're offering those. We'll hold on to our quarterly uh schedule that we've had with the past ones and we'll be doing those out at the jail again. But.
That's the victim impact panel. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, those victim impact panels.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Perkins? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Um probation director Bob Starks, uh has a monthly report attached. Mr. Starks, any comments?
Good afternoon, uh Chairman Crandall and everyone. I did, I just noticed that under my uh criminal workload twenty twenty-one year to date. I forgot to change those figures. Obviously, they would be the same as the numbers we had for January, so it'd be twelve and five, not two ninety-three and two fifty-six, so. Uh but our numbers definitely decreased over probably all of our areas last year due to the, obviously, the covid. Uh pandemic shutting the courts down in the schools for the majority of the school year, so.
Any uh any questions for Mr. Starks? Looks like we have a a request to accept grant funds for Article thirteen eighty um ATI programs. Is there a a motion to move forward with those?
Just say to Healy, I'll move that.
Second, Dibble.
Motion is made by legislator Healy, seconded by legislator Dibble. Mr. Starks, anything we need to know about this beyond what we're looking at?
Uh well, um I apologize for the late notice, but I just received it yesterday. And uh pleasantly surprised because I was under the impression we would get no money from the state for our ATI program for. Uh twenty twenty-one, so I was really surprised and pleasantly surprised that we received the money, so glad to see it.
Thank you. You know, we'll take fifty, eight hundred dollars whenever we can get it.
Yes.
Any uh further discussion? All in favor of this, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Uh anything else, Mr. Starks, before we proceed?
I have nothing else, Chairman.
Thank you. Uh weights and mes- uh measures, uh Director Gilbert Green and. Uh we have a report from Gilbert. And uh you tried to disguise yourself there, Gilbert, but we know who you are. Any comments?
It should be a little darker, but.
Hey, it happens.
They uh they uh the uh only change I have on my report is a couple of bulk tanks I didn't get to because of the meter truck broke, froze up. So they, something about being in the teens, the water freezes, I don't know. But so other than.
There there that's beyond the ones in Fillmore and Almond.
Yeah, one of one of each.
Yeah.
So but they're gonna be rescheduled for the end of this month. We should be alright. The uh that. The only other thing I had was I wanted to congratulate Mr. Harris's son for his accomplishments last Saturday, so. He couldn't be there, but I I was there cheering him on.
Appreciate that.
Any uh questions for Mr. Green?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it's Dibble.
Yes, Mr. Dibble.
Yes, I could be at the Pancake House this year in short track.
I'm hoping.
Could be posted.
We'll see if it opens up or not.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gilbert.
Okay.
Um Sheriff Rick Whitney has his monthly report attached, distributed. Anything particular, Sheriff, you want to point out on this report or add to?
Uh no, everything's pretty much there, I guess.
Any uh questions for the sheriff on his monthly report?
Um I have a question about the um uh federal inmates. Uh is are are they, is is the number about what you budgeted for this year? Or is it lower?
Uh I'd have to look to be sure, but I'm pretty sure it's probably close because we've been running about the same since late fall or early fall last year. So I would I would think that's what we budgeted for.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the sheriff on his report? And we do have uh approval of the New York State Department of Corrections Services uh Office of the. Nutritional Services Contract. Um if we could get a motion to get that.
Legislator Healy will make that motion.
Second, Dibble.
Motion made by legislator Healy and seconded by legislator Dibble. Um Sheriff, anything we need to know about this, anything different?
Uh it's just a renewal of a contract we've had for several years. Uh we use their food to supplement. Uh it's it's high calorie. And it's the needs that we're supposed to give to the inmates. Uh we also use it on an emergency basis. Uh it's basically. A lot of it is large, like boiling bags, where if we were to have a couple of cooks or something calling sick, then anybody could throw them in some hot water and we could do the meals. Uh and it comes from the same uh place that makes all the meals for the state prison, so we get it at a pretty good price. Um all the all the dollars are obviously estimates on just what we've gone uh in the past, so it. The contract will really end up with what we we only pay for what we actually order and buy, so it could be less or it could be a little more depending on what happens.
Thank you. Any questions for the sheriff on you? Sounds like it's working out well and filling the bill as needed. Um. Any uh I guess we're we've got a motion made and and seconded. Um all in favor, say aye.
Uh aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. Anything else, Sheriff?
Uh no, I think uh that's it. Uh the administrator and I have been working on the uh. Police reform plan and uh I've been working on a PowerPoint and things like that, so hopefully we'll get that running.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, uh legislator Stockin here. Is the sheriff, do you have any feedback yet about that uh from the Public Police Reform Committee?
Oh yeah, I think uh I'd have to look again, but I think we've got maybe five or six emails. Uh. A couple of them are just, I don't know, they they kinda went on forever, uh really didn't pertain to what we were doing. Uh and other than that, it's about half and half. Some of them are just, you know, supporting the police and. And and some of them are just giving us some ideas. There's a couple of good ideas that we've got.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Um you mentioned that the county administrator had been working with you on the Police Reform and Reinvention Committee. And uh the next action, I don't know if this was by design and uh the county administrator thought maybe she could skinny through. But uh somehow we noticed that her name was not in Resolution Number forty-two of twenty-one. And we need to amend that to get her properly in place. So if we could have a motion to amend Resolution forty-two of twenty-one and add Carissa Mapp, County Administrator, to that list.
Legislator Healy will make that motion, Chairman.
Second, Dibble.
Motion made by legislator Healy, seconded by legislator Dibble. And this will amend that resolution. Uh County Administrator Carissa Mapp. Discussion? We thought you would skinny by Carissa.
Well, I I don't tend to notice when my own name is missing from things, but the sheriff did, so I.
Good eye, Sheriff. We'll have to keep an eye on her from now on.
Well, if she was trying to get out of it, I apologize.
All in favor of this, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Um legislator Healy? Any uh thing I missed or anything you need to add?
No, Mr. Chairman, I just will repeat what Mr. Lucky said about the the fire advisory, county fire advisory board. Uh monthly meeting uh last the week over friendship and uh legislator Harris, myself. Uh we're in attendance and and we received uh all good reports back on on the uh new radio system. Uh at that time, so that's uh that's always nice nice to hear, especially after you spend such a long and lengthy endeavor on everybody's part. And uh and been a lot of patience uh from our first responders. Uh. And uh other than that, uh I have nothing else uh to mention. Uh I I thought maybe the sheriff, if he uh. If he had anything on nine-one-one enumeration or anything further on the radio uh project, that maybe he might wanna uh. Uh say a little bit about that. If he does, if he doesn't, that's fine too.
Well, I just, Russ uh told me yesterday that I think he finished up the town of Genesee and and the uh address updates. Uh that's going pretty well. Uh we've we've really added a lot of addresses in the last couple of years, so uh we got a lot to do, but it's 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 going well.
Thank you. And uh legislator Healy and legislator Harris, thank you for attending that that meeting and it's uh. It is good to get good news, but uh we have good feedback and uh concerns and and we'll continue to uh. Keep on those as as need be. One thing for sure with technology is it continually changes and continually needs updated and. And tweaked and fixed here and there, but uh thank you both for attending that that meeting.
Start like remodeling uh technology is start like remodeling in the house about the time you think it got done, it's time to start over again. But uh it's uh yes, it's an ever constant uh thing.
So Chairman, legislator Harris?
Yes.
I had a quick question for the sheriff before we lose him, unrelated to any of that stuff. Um. I believe the governor, when he put out his budget proposal, provided uh an opportunity or at least opening the discussion to um shared county jails. I was wondering if the sheriff or the Sheriff's Association had been talking about it at all and and if they had, I was I was wondering what the early thoughts are from the Sheriff's Association, yea, nay, pros, cons?
Uh most of the most of the sheriffs in the association are are negative about it. Uh a lot of the numbers they threw out, uh the one study that was just done was based basically all on numbers. And of course, it was done by a group that uh basically doesn't wanna see anybody go to jail anyway, so they were kind of biased in their report. But a lot of the numbers don't add up. Uh I was looking at our section and and really the numbers just don't add up.
Is there anything from the state sheriffs that you could forward to us in terms of rebuttal or anything like that?
Oh yeah, actually, I'm on the Legislative Committee and right now we're working on a a letter to the governor and when we get it finished. It's addressing that bail reform and a couple of other things. Uh once we get it done and it uh the memo goes out, I'll I'll copy it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, legislator Harris, and thank you, Sheriff. Moving on to uh Personnel Committee and uh I have, there's no items under here and uh. But we do have Chairman of this committee, Steve Havy. Um if he doesn't broadside us with a whole list of stuff, looks like it'll be fairly straightforward. Legislator Havy, are you there?
I am here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh thankfully, the Personnel Committee has uh no items to bring forward today, so we can move right along.
Thank you. Uh Human Services Committee and uh. The committee chairman, uh legislator Hopkins is not with us today. She wasn't able to attend the meeting. But we do have the uh Vice Chair. Um legislator Burdick, it will help get us through this. And uh legislator Burdick, if you end up uh just holler and yell if I get too too off track here.
Okay.
We do have from Public Health Director Tyler Shaw, monthly report. Tyler, are you with us?
I'm here, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anything in particular you want to uh highlight or point out?
Sure, just one item. Uh you can see on the first page of my monthly report, under lead case management, uh we currently have forty cases. That we're managing in the month of December, which is up from last year from sixteen, so that's quite a jump, which is in direct reference to the lowering of the. The blood lead level in children um threshold.
So uh no, no particular um more action or cases, it's. Um, more action or cases, it's the, uh, goalpost moved a little bit.
That's correct.
Any particular questions on the, uh, on the report for? Tyler from the legislators?
Mr. Chairman's Dibble?
Yes, legislator Dibble.
I just wanted to thank Tyler, thank you Tyler and the department for all they've done, extra effort, et cetera, on this COVID nineteen crisis. Very good.
This is legislator Burdick. Tyler, do you have a number of how many people have now been vaccinated for the COVID in Allegheny County?
Just a rough estimate for everyone. I try to touch base with the pharmacies and the hospitals to see what their numbers are. Uh, just over two thousand.
We're seeing, um, on the horizon here, more. Uh, vaccines coming into the county.
There was that sixteen percent increase, uh, that is an, an additional allocation, uh, based on population. And based on that, we got the base allocation, which is an extra hundred doses. Spanning a three-week period, which was slated specifically for OPWDD, uh, staff and residents. So we can only utilize that additional, uh, vaccine on those, that population.
Mr. Chairman, this is legislator Harris.
Yes.
Um, I'm not sure if this is the best time for this, but I'm going to try it anyway. Brenda had sent out an email about a NISAC webinar, uh, regarding FEMA, uh, reimbursements. And I'm only assuming that Terry is going to be on that, but I was wondering if anybody from, because department of health is so. Heavy in COVID, COVID-related expenses. Is anybody from county health going to be in on that?
Well, legislator Harris, right now, um, we'll be able to pull everything together that we know of, and then we will go to departments if we need more information. For that FEMA claim. Um, Carissa, myself and Jody Adams and Jenna Kelly are working on that FEMA claim, um, and we are attending that webinar.
Okay, thanks. And you've already, you've already accumulated all the, the individual claims by department, right?
We already have, um, accounting, um, that we set up for all the COVID expenses. And like, for instance, for Tyler's case, they have specific line items that we used for COVID and for any funding they got against it. So yeah, we're pretty, we're pretty clear on what we had. Um, and then we'll just gather everything up when we get to file that claim.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, we do have, uh, a need acceptance and appropriation of COVID nineteen. Uh, emergency response effort grant funds. If we could have a motion made to move forward with that.
Legislator Burdick will move.
Root will second.
Motion is made by legislator Burdick and seconded by legislator Root. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Uh, we also need approval of Thornton Engineering LLP agreement. If we could have, uh, motion to get that on the floor.
Legislator Burdick will move.
I can second.
Motion is made by legislator Burdick, seconded by legislator Stocken. Discussion. Mr. Shaw, anything we need to know about this?
Not, nothing in particular. We've had this contract for a few years. It's for our, uh, engineering review services for various environmental health programs.
Nothing's changed with it?
No, the rates are still the same.
Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Uh, Mr. Shaw, anything else?
Just busy with COVID, as everyone knows. Appreciate all the support, uh, from various. Uh, legislators and all the legislative body as well as our community partners. We couldn't do it without everyone. So hospital, our pharmacies. Um, we're all in this together and, and working as one team to get as many people as we can vaccinated. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And, uh, uh, you and the full department for what you do. Thank you very much. Um, office for the aging director Anita Madison, uh, has a monthly report that has been distributed. Uh, Anita, are you with us? If there's anything in particular that, uh. Legislators have for questions, they can get ahold of, uh, Anita. For that. Um, we do have, uh, a need acceptance and appropriation of blue fund donation. If we could have, uh, motion made to get that on the floor.
Burdick will make that motion.
Havy will second.
Motion is made by legislator Burdick, seconded by legislator Havy. Discussion. This is, uh, three thousand dollars. Help with the cost, increased cost for COVID nineteen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Um. On to social services and Commissioner Edna Kays has a monthly report attached. Edna, are you with us?
I am, I am. Thank you.
Anything, uh, in particular that we, you'd like to highlight, point out on your report?
Um, I think it's interesting that, uh, that the, uh, Medicaid cases, and those are just Medicaid alone. Went up a hundred and ninety-five cases in, in two thousand and twenty. I think that's really interesting. I wonder if that's. Due to the pandemic and, um, people becoming unemployed. Um. And the child protective services, those cases overall went down ninety-nine cases. So our total cases for the year were six hundred and twenty-four cases. I also wonder if that was due to the pandemic. In the last. Um, three months, our cases have come back to their, uh, usual numbers. Um, but the months prior to that, there was some, the numbers were a little bit lower. Um. I, oh, I wanted to share with you that we have developed our new monthly report form, which you will see, uh, next month when we're doing. Um, January statistics for you. Um, and I hope that you will like it. Um, and I think that, um, uh, I believe that we, the twenty percent holdout on the first quarter payment of the RTA. And Terry, please correct me if I'm wrong, has been, um, sent to us. So that money has been received. They, we are continuing to wait for the RTA plan to be approved. So that the balance of the, um, pass-through funding that is owed to Allegheny County will, uh, be released. I'm not sure exactly when that's going to happen, um, but I am certainly hoping that it's soon. And that would take care of the monthly report. If you have any questions, happy to do my best to answer them.
We look forward to seeing that new report. It's, uh, it's all the buzz in the human services committee. It's almost all they talk about lately.
Yeah, well, that's good.
Any particular questions, um, for Edna Kays? Our commissioner on her report? And we. Someone there? Thought someone was trying to jump in there. Um, approval of, uh. Cheryl, we are in contract for the Child Advocacy Center. If we could have a motion to get that on the floor.
Burdick will make that motion.
We'll second.
Motion made by legislator Burdick and seconded by legislator Root. Commissioner, anything we need to know about this? Obviously this is just connected with the, a need for the Child Advocacy Center.
Yep, these are the trained, sane, nervous nurses that I think I've talked to you about before. Or else I've talked so much about them, I don't know who I've talked to them about before, the same nurses. And then, um, Dr. Coin. Uh, we're excited to be able, we're hoping that by March, we can have our medical staff up and running, um, which will complete. Um, all of the services that, um, will be filled for the services that we provide from this, through the CAC.
Yeah, and, uh, these are, uh, um, we have the rates here, but they are. Covered under the grant, so there's no local share.
Correct.
Any further discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion is carried. And we need an approval of, uh, Nicole Steinauer, our in contract, uh, for the Child Advocacy Center, same. Same deal, if we could have a motion.
Motion by Burdick?
Second by Havy.
Motion is made by legislator Burdick, seconded by legislator Havy. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. We need, uh, motion to move forward with an approval of the John F. Um, Coin MD contract for Child Advocacy Center.
Motion by Burdick?
We'll second.
Motion made by legislator Burdick, seconded by legislator Root. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Um, we need, uh, correction of, uh, Pamela, was Pamela Dotweiler contract that was approved by. Resolution fourteen twenty-one. And we could have that. Motion made.
Motion by Burdick.
Second by Decker.
Motion made by legislator Burdick, seconded by legislator Root. Um. Commissioner, are you right there?
Yes.
Where are we? Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm missing something here. I'm not seeing the correction.
It's a dollar. I believe that the contract was for twenty-eight dollars and we should have upped it to twenty-nine dollars. She's increasing it a dollar per year until she reaches thirty dollars and we did not up that. I apologize for that error.
All right. Thank you for that. If I'm looking at, I probably steering right at it. I recall the email, but I don't see my paper on it. Um, any just further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Um. At this time, uh, vice chair legislator Burdick. Um, your chance to square everything away now. Legislator Hopkins is not here. We won't tell her anything that you said.
I think it's great.
Thank you again. Um. Ways and Means, uh, special committee. And, uh, this is chaired by legislator Stocken. And we need, uh. Tax bill correction. Uh, this is from real property tax director, uh, Joe Budinger. Mr. Budinger, are you with us?
I am.
Um. Anything you want to point out or we need to know what we're doing with this?
No, it's, uh, it's just a, uh, correction on, uh, oil lease that had no production. Uh, unfortunately the assessor. Did not reflect that in, in her, uh, in her data. So that's what that's about.
Is that the one? I'm, I'm sorry, this is Fant. Is that the one that was four thousand something?
It's, uh, three thousand eight fifty-three oh six.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
We get a motion on the, on the floor for this?
I can move.
Havy will second.
Second.
Had a, a motion made by legislator Stocken, seconded by legislator Havy. Discussion, further discussion, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. And legislator Stocken, well, while we're here under Ways and Means, anything you have?
Uh, Mr. Harris was eager that we, uh, somehow bring the attention, something that must have been about his son and swimming. Mr. Harris spends so much time around the pool and all, I don't, and he's busy. I don't know how he manages to keep his head above water.
I'll provide a, uh, 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 something in writing to the board, uh, before the next meeting.
He'll have a pond to swim in next year.
Yeah, wait.
Right now his head's in the snow.
Nothing else, sir.
Thank you very much. Um. Position view, ad hoc committee recommendation, and we have. A, uh, a number of them that are listed here for, um. Updates, and I think there's a couple that there's still some questions on, but, uh, I'll turn this over to. County Administrator Carissa Mapp to, uh, lead us forward in this portion.
Thank you. Our ad hoc committee met this morning and we did look at all of these requests, so we can move forward with some of these today. Um, I'll just go through them one by one if that's. So the first assistant county attorney has been vacated since I believe November of two thousand and nineteen. There's. Uh, already standing permission to fill this, but I did ask Mr. Downing to include this along with his other request. Um, the ad hoc committee recommends that this, uh, be approved and that he be allowed to fill this position. It is fully budgeted and partially, uh, funded through reimbursement of billing to DSS.
We get the, uh. A motion to, uh. Discuss this.
Harris will move it for discussion.
Yeah, I'll second.
Motion made by legislator Harris and seconded by legislator Fanton. And this would, uh. Not require any further action to, uh, take care of this.
Correct.
Um, discussion, questions?
Mr. Chairman, this is legislator Harris.
Yes.
I'd like to hear the ad hoc committee's recommendation on the second assistant county attorney, uh, now, we will on this one.
The ad hoc committee's recommendation is that both of these be advertised and hopefully filled. As you might know, we are having a difficulty. Um, between the county attorney's office and the district attorney's office recruiting any attorneys to this area. And we would like to. See more, uh, consolidated effort to find attorneys to come to Allegheny County and work in these offices. So. By advertising both, we'll get one or more.
And the, and the secretary position is that your recommendation to fill that as well?
Correct. That one was recently vacated at the end of two thousand and twenty. And that, that position is, we've always had two secretaries, um, only having one secretary is putting. A great deal of burden on one secretary. I don't think it's a sustainable method, especially when we're short.
Well, nothing, I, I don't want to monopolize the conversation, but, um, and not that I have any reason to dispute the ad hoc committee's recommendation. Um, but the office, although I'm sure it was overtaxed, the office has been operating in this current structure, in fact. And, uh, now I'm one person from where it is now, in the past, how long, since you were appointed, uh, county administrator. So is it really necessary to add two more positions to that office when it's been functioning, maybe not at its best, but it's been functioning even more than it has right now?
My feeling is, we, we've had that secretary position, we've had that second county attorney all along. The secretary just vacated in December. This, the second, is everybody still there? It seems like somebody froze up there.
I can hear.
Okay, the second assistant has just announced her resignation, so she hasn't left. The first assistant has been vacated. However, I was, uh, filling in as acting assistant in that role. You did have the benefit of my services last year. You will not going forward, so I can. You did have the benefit of my services last year. You will not going forward, so I can be full-time administrator.
This is legislator Burke. Are they required to live in the county?
Yes.
That has, I'm sure, is a problem. Can we do a local law saying they do not have to live in the county? Would that help fill those positions?
I do not believe you can, but I would allow the or refer to the county attorney to research that question.
Thank you.
I think we've looked at it previously.
Let's say to Haley has a question for the administrator. Now, the courts haven't been operating full-time since COVID's been taking place. Is that correct?
They have not been operating full-time in a traditional sense. They have continued on. You know, our county attorneys do mostly child protective and foster care work. That has not gone away. It's just been more of a virtual format, the same with the support court work that they've taken on too.
But the family, a lot, a lot of things that were previously criminal cases are now family court cases also, is that correct?
Um, there was the raise the age legislation, so you probably picked up a few more kids as juvenile delinquents as well, yes.
Though if anything, your caseload has grown in the county attorney's office, probably will grow more once COVID we get past that hurdle and and things open up again is my my assumption.
I think they'll be very busy and, you know, our county attorney, it can't be filling in family court and representing this board all the time. So I do think it's important that you fill these assistants to take care of the family court workload, so the county attorney can get busy on all the work we want him to do. You know, Mr. Harris, why don't those board rules rewrite?
Well, that's, yeah, that would be nice. Does Mr. Donigan have anything to add?
Thanks, Brooke. I think it's very important to get these positions filled, to get this office running up to speed. I do appreciate that there has not been full staff for this office, but that being said, it seems like work is starting to pile up and and having these positions filled would certainly be a service for the for the county.
Thank you.
We do have a a motion on the floor and seconded for the first assistant county attorney. And we've covered these other county attorney positions, but I want to echo what the county administrator mentioned, that we had heard wearing a couple of hats last year. And I, for one, would like to see the county administrator being able to concentrate more on the county administrator position than, you know, taking up slack in in this other department. And it's not just the county administrator, general duties that have come along here since she's been county administrator. We've been dealing with now this police reform, COVID nineteen had started in March. And not only the started off daily calls, but continual calls with the the other five counties in our region. And now with this vaccination coming out and the vaccine plan, it's dumped an awful lot of extra issues on county administrative plate. So we really need to fill these positions and get the the help that our county attorney, Mr. Donigan, needs. But it will still, you know, hopefully free up some more time for the county administrator to shovel a little off her plate that seemingly is overflowing. So I would encourage the filling of these each of these positions.
Yeah, this is Fant. I want to thank Carissa for the extra effort she's put into all this stuff and it's really appreciated.
Thank you for the kind words, both of you.
Let alone this ad hoc committee that we created and put you in charge of. Anyway, we have a a motion on the floor and seconded for filling of the first assistant county attorney in the county attorney's office. Any further discussion on that? All in favor of this say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion is carried. We'll continue on with the next one. Carissa?
The ad hoc recommended that this one also be filled. So that is the recommendation that we approve this one.
This would be the second assistant county attorney. Is there a motion?
Fant, I'll move that.
Second, Decker.
Motion made by legislator Fanton, seconded by legislator Decker. Discussion? All in favor of this say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. Continuing on.
The ad hoc committee was recommending that this board approve filling the secretary position in the county attorney's office.
Is there a motion to that effect?
Havy will move that.
You're a second. A motion is made by legislator Havy and seconded by legislator Harris for the filling of the secretary position in the county attorney's office. Discussion?
Ms. Knapp, just to clarify, all three of these positions were budgeted for?
Yes, they were all fully budgeted and partial reimbursement through DSS.
And and nothing new here, other than we've been floating long without filling these.
Correct.
Further discussion on the secretary position? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion is carried. Continuing on.
Okay, we're moving to a different department now, so we are looking at the Aging Services Specialist in Office of the Aging. And the ad hoc committee did review this one this morning. We are making a recommendation that this position also be approved to be filled. It is budgeted for two thousand twenty-one.
I can move.
That in a second.
Motion is made by legislator Stockton and seconded by legislator Fanton. Discussion? All in favor of filling this position, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion is carried.
The next one is a luncheon site manager, and this one's a little different in that there is a resolution that Office for the Aging has standing permission to fill this. They just need to notify us and get permission after the fact that they can proceed to fill this. So this one, I believe, has already been filled and the ad hoc committee recommends that this board approve that filling. I don't know. I think Anita might be on the phone. Hopefully I didn't get that wrong.
Hey, I'm on the phone and note, Carissa, you did get that correct.
Okay, thank you.
Move by Decker.
That has been filled, Anita.
Yes, it has.
And the reason we did this kind of a blanket was so that we didn't have delays in these in in these positions, waiting for us to get back together and take action.
And just a comment, the luncheon centers are not open at this time due to COVID. However, the luncheon site manager is being utilized in other means, correct, Anita?
That is correct. The site managers are being used to do things such as drive meals on wheels when necessary, support for COVID vaccine waiting lists and other office duty that would that has increased. So yes, they're being used in other capacities within the office. We are going to be looking in the near future to reopen the site, so it will allow us to have site managers already on staff and ready to be trained when we do open those sites as well.
Thank you. I just want everyone to understand that, you know, the urgency to fill this isn't just about luncheon centers at this moment. Yes, close, but you're using the staff in other ways until we can open them up again, which will hopefully will be soon.
Correct, yes. They are actually, the site manager is driving meals on wheels a couple of days a week to fill a gap that we have there as well without creating another position, so.
And nobody's twiddling their thumbs, wondering what to do down at the Office for the Aging.
Absolutely not.
I think we need a a motion for this luncheon center manager.
Move by Decker. Havy will second.
Motion is made by legislator Decker and seconded by legislator Havy to approve this luncheon center manager position. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried.
Okay, next on the list is a probation officer. This position has been vacant for a few months. Mr. Starks has budgeted this in two thousand twenty-one, and I believe he is ready to proceed with this. The ad hoc committee reviewed it and we are recommending that this board approve that.
Well, just later, Haley will move that.
Motion is made by legislator Haley, seconded by legislator Deppel. Discussion?
I would just like to point out that the point of the ad hoc committee is really to slow things down and examine all these positions and impact on the budget. Mr. Starks was ahead of that curve. He was doing that last year, and this is one of those positions, I believe. So he'd already delayed filling this for a few months. So thank you, Mr. Starks.
Are you?
County Administrator, this is David Decker. What happens with the funds? Was this position funded last year and wasn't filled? Did those funds get rolled into unfunded mandate?
Well, I I believe that it was funded through last year and that it was partially unfilled, but maybe Mr. Starks could give us a better rundown of the timeline on that.
Yes, the probation officer, we had a probation officer that retired in June in two thousand twenty, so that position's been unfilled since then. We also had a supervisor that retired in October and that position has been unfilled since then. So both of those were budgeted for two thousand twenty and budgeted for two thousand twenty-one as well.
And not filling them was part of your two thousand twenty contingency budget, and that was how you were saving some money in your own department, correct?
That is correct. We also had a secretary that retired in April and we did, we have not filled and may not fill that position either.
So any, anything that's not used within a departmental budget would fall to fund balance, but we're, we don't know how much at this time. Terry's still calculating that down at the treasures department. It'll be a while before we we have those final numbers.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, questions for Mr. Stark? Thank you, Bob, for your effort. All in favor of this say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion is carried. County Administrator?
Next one is the Director of Environmental Health in the Health Department. This position is budgeted as well. It was just vacated over the weekend. The current person in this position was promoted up to deputy public health director. So at this point in time, our ad hoc committee has some follow-up questions for Mr. Shaw, and we've scheduled an appointment for him to meet with us on the seventeenth. So we will have more news about that one, but no action is recommended at this time. And that also goes for the two principal social welfare examiners. Those are two recent vacancies. One is a retirement, one is a resignation, I believe, in DSS. And ad hoc committee just had some follow-up questions from Ms. Case, and we've already scheduled time to meet with her on the seventeenth as well. So no, no recommendation for action today.
Well, these these three positions are just on the list and FYI, at this time, ad hoc will be working through them with recommendations later.
Correct.
Thank you. Anything, anything more you'd like to comment on County Administrator Knapp? As far as the ad hoc committee and how that's working?
The ad hoc committee, I think, is working well. The conversations are good conversations. The follow-up questions and conversations we've had with department heads have all gone well, and we just look forward to getting more information on the outstanding positions.
Thank you. Is there anything else beyond the ad hoc committee? Is there anything County Administrator that you would like to add before we adjourn?
I don't have any any new business actions for today. I may for Monday. I know I've been talking to the folks at Armstrong about the possibility of applying for further CARES Act funding. The last application we put through, I don't believe there was any funding left by the time our application was looked at. There was a very limited funding bank, and there might be more funds available. That's still developing. And I know we have CDBG applications are due at the very beginning of March that we would need to have public hearings at the end of this month if we wanted to proceed on any applications. And I know we have at least one sub-recipient that would like us to look at that, and I may have something for committee to hold to come off the floor on Monday, setting a date for a public hearing in February. So just a heads up on those items.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question, a follow-up question for the administrator on those three positions that we're leaving unfilled at this time.
Yeah. By Haley.
County Administrator, those three positions are mostly funded, if not entirely funded, from outside source, not county dollars, is that correct?
Sorry, what office were you talking about again?
Well, three of those positions that are we're leaving unfilled temporarily. We research Director of Environmental Health and the ones in Social Services are funded by outside funding in that not county dollars mostly, right? Is that correct?
I would say partially, if not wholly. I think it just depends.
Thank you.
Any, any questions while we have the county administrators here for the moment? And if not, moving on under old business? Anything under new business? Go to the order.
Um, this is legislator Burke. I'd like to ask Tyler a question about the vaccination. I should have asked it earlier. At the rate that we've done the two thousand, just a rough estimate of how long it's going to take to really get everyone in Allegheny County vaccinated that requests the shot?
Hard to say at this point, because those two thousand included our pharmacies and hospitals. And as of the past two weeks, the hospital has not received any additional doses. And as of this week, I don't know of any pharmacies that received any doses, and all we received is one hundred for the entire county. So at that rate, it would take us well to the fall at this point if we keep on this rate.
Well, you also have this, you also have the second shots.
Right. Well, the reason I ask is people are asking and they're being, you know, trying to get on waiting lists and you know, there's not a lot of answers, and I just wanted, you know, timeframe what we what we're looking at. Thank you, Tyler.
You're welcome.
Tyler, this is legislator Decker. Those hundred shots, are you, does that mean you're going to give fifty and hold the other fifty in reserve for their second dose?
No, we do not have to hold any in reserve. They they allocate a separate allotment for all the second doses that we process for the.
Have you had any delay in getting those second doses?
As of this week, no. No delay. There is a dilemma on the state's end of we, we were able to extract additional doses out of our first doses, and they are only allocating us the amount that we originally were allocated from the first dose. So meaning if I got twenty extra doses out of the first dose, they're only giving me, you know, a hundred instead of a hundred and twenty for the second dose. So we're going to have to be really creative on our end to get everyone their second dose. And we've, we've ran this at the flagpole. It's gone through most of the hubs at the state level, so we're going to work on our end.
And I don't think that issue is unique to Allegheny County. There's no way it could be. We weren't the only ones getting extra doses out of aisles.
Can you think further before we adjourn?
Yeah, Kurt, this is Dwight. Terry, are you on?
Yes, I am, Dwight.
Terry, I saw, I think we're, for at least for DPW, they're going to count a five percent. they're gonna count a five percent, uh, withhold for this last year instead of the twenty? Is that, uh, something I read wrong, or is that correct?
That is a proposal that is out there to reduce the twenty percent to just a five percent hold, but we have not gotten anything official on that as of yet, and that's across the board. My understanding is that's across the board.
I can't, uh, there's interference, but I, for some reason, but, so for this year, they're talking five percent instead of the twenty?
They're expecting, well, the goal is, I guess, on their end, is when they make us whole for the twenty percent, it will be fifteen percent, and they will hold back five percent. But we don't have any official on that yet. So they were gonna.
Thank you.
Their holdback to five percent versus twenty.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Our understanding, as if I could. Um, our understanding on that is that depends on the package that the state gets from the federal government, there's a couple, there's a Plan A and a Plan B. They'll do this if they get six billion dollars, and they'll do this if they get fifteen million, billion dollars. So it all depends on what, um, the package is that comes from the federal government.
It looks like they're gonna get the big one.
Well, there you go, so hopefully we'll get all our money.
The mega.
Yeah.
Mr. Devil?
Yes, Mr. Devil?
Yeah, a question for Terry, if we get to fifteen percent, well, is there a chance we get additional five percent in the future?
Um, I think that depends on what the package is. Um, the, I believe that their, what their preliminary numbers are showing for their budget year is that they would be able to give us everything but five percent. And that, depending on what they get from the feds, they would be able to give us the rest.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further, thank you, County Treasurer Ross.
There's nothing further, Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Devil.
Before we adjourn, um, I would like to ask Carissa, uh, how are we progressing with, uh, reopening the county? We need to start doing that real quick.
I, I think we're, we're doing pretty well, Mr. Decker. Um, I know we want to get back to meeting in person, and I'm hopeful we can do that, uh, I was looking at March, so I don't know, our numbers have kind of gone down in the county, and as long as they stay on that track and we get, uh, our clerk, Brunda, trained on the AV equipment that was installed, we should be ready to go.
Yeah, the cases are down, and we haven't had another death in, in quite a while, it's, it's hung right at fifty-three.
I believe.
We don't have to wait till the start of the month, we could, we could open anytime if it was deemed possible.
I believe there's some, those, those three cases, I think, are going to be, uh, upgraded, right? There's been a couple of the ones that I'm familiar with.
Mr. Graves, you were saying something?
I, I move we adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Mr. Graves and seconded by Mr. Decker, Decker to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we stand adjourned, thank you very much.